Excellent. Can you hear me okay, Andy?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I want to say good evening and welcome to everyone to the Newburyport zoning Board of Appeals Agenda Meeting of October 13th, 2020. Just to give those who might be just logging on as attendees an overview of how these meetings work. We have via Zoom, everyone listed under the panelist bar are our members of the zoning Board of Appeals, as well as our city planner, our planning director, and our keeper of the minutes. I'll go through in a moment and introduce the board, and then we will go through our agenda. And I'll walk everyone through exactly how the process of a Zoom municipal meeting is run, at least the zoning Board of Appeals anyway. And I'll basically outline for everyone the format of our hearings this evening. We have a few matters that are on the agenda that have been subject to requests for continuances by the applicant or the applicant's representative. We'll deal with those first. And then we'll get into the first full public hearing. And before we do any of that, again, I'll walk everyone through the quick outline and we'll jump right in. So, beginning this evening, I'm going to start with the roll call and we're going to work from the meeting agenda. We're going to take the roll call, establish that we have a quorum. There are five voting members of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals. There is a minimum of four votes in the affirmative that is required for any application to be successful. But I'll go through and we'll do our roll call, our business meeting where we approve our minutes from our last hearing of 9:22. And then what we will do in the business portion of the meeting is we will address the one and only minor modification request on 66 St. Avenue, after which we'll go into our public hearings, dealing with our continuances first, and then our full public hearing immediately thereafter. So without further ado, I'll introduce the members of the board. In attendance this evening, we have Mr. Mark Moore, our vice chair, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Ms. Rachel Webb, ZBA member, Mr. Ken Swanton, ZBA member, and Mr. Brendan Vanovic, our associate member. I believe Walter Bud Chanon is absent this evening. And my name is Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman. And for those of you that are just logging on, welcome to the ZBA meeting of October 13th, 2020. So, beginning, I'm going to call the roll and if you members of the ZBA can just respond in saying either here or present, we'll see who we have and if we have a quorum. Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Delisle?
Present.
Ms. Webb?
Present.
Mr. Swanton?
Here.
Mr. Vanovic?
Present.
All right, and Rob Champetti?
Mr. Shagnan is on.
Oh, yes. Okay, great. And Mr. Chanon?
I'm here, yes, present.
Excellent. Okay, so the voting members this evening, the five required voting members will be Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb, Mr. Swanton, and myself. There is one application at the very end of this agenda which I have to recuse myself from, so I will be turning over the gavel to our vice chair, Mr. Moore. That's the matter of 468th Street. When I do, the fifth voting member will become Mr. Chanon. So with that, we have a quorum. We also have in attendance this evening Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, Mr. Andy Port, our planning director, and our keeper of minutes, Ms. Gretchen Joy. So without further ado, we'll move into the business meeting. We have from Ms. Joy, the minutes from the hearing of 9:22 before us. This is the point of the business meeting when I will elicit from any of the members of the ZBA if there are any comments or changes or revisions. And if so, just please unmute your mic and feel free to let us know. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes, it's Rachel Webb. I have three edits. The first is under item two, the request for minor modification for 162 State Street. Let's see, one, two. On the sixth line where the sentence starts in response to a question, by, it should say by Ms. Webb, not for Ms. Webb. The applicant estimated the mature trees are 40 feet high. The second change would be on that same page under item C, which was 190 High Street. The third line down should say a curb cut that would allow access to the right side. So I don't think you need the word "to" there. And then on the second page, under the public hearing, the 28th Summit Place, the second paragraph, the fifth line, it says the area in the back. You should add the words "in the back," so it reads, "The area in the back is used to keep the dogs away from the street." And then further down, Mr. Champetti, if you wanted to comment on the part where you were proposing, it says, "Mr. Champetti said the proposed location would," I think you meant to say, "be appropriate for the lot." There's a couple of extra words in that sentence.
Yeah, I agree. It should just read "be appropriate for the lot."
That's it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there's one more. On the third page, the last line of the first paragraph, "The addition would not be detrimental because of the lot size." It says just detriment.
Okay.
Add the word, add the letters A.L., so the word is detrimental. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Any other comments or any other comments with respect to the proposed changes by Ms. Webb? Hearing none. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move, we approve the minutes. Ken Swanton?
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Moore. I'll call the roll. You can just respond with either "I" or "yes" or "no." Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chanon?
Yes.
Mr. Vanovic?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes with respect to the minutes. That's seven. In the affirmative, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Moving to the next item in the business meeting, we have a request for a minor modification on the application of 66 St. Avenue. It's a docket 2014-054. And I understand on behalf of the applicant speaking this evening, we'll have, we have Ms. Jessica Keys. May we hear from the applicant, Ms. Keys?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, great. We can hear you. Thank you.
I can't see you guys.
We do an audio-only Zoom meetings.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, not everyone, I mean, anyone's welcome to put their video up, but not everyone. We found that not everyone's been able to, so to kind of level the playing field so everyone has kind of equal sensory input, we just went audio-only.
No worries here.
Yeah, by all means. Feel free to tell us your proposal and your presentation for the minor mod.
So the Providence Bank is now changing their branding. As you can see, it's completely different. They are rebranding at all of their locations. We are actually going down in square footage on this sign. We're using the existing posts. It's not an illuminated sign, which is why it was set for a minor modification, hoping that everybody approves. The pink, I've found that some people and some towns have had issues with, but they've approved because it's now going to be the bank logo. They're changing their name. They're completely rebranding.
Okay. Was there any, is there anything else you wish to present or tell us about? Is it pretty much self-explanatory in the signage?
As you can see in the signage, we're basically taking the Providence Bank sign down in the green and just replacing it with a carved-out black sign.
Okay.
It will be where, and I know it's, any changes in the shape is typically an issue. But it is, like I said, less in square footage. It's only 31 square feet where I believe the other one was way larger. I don't have in front of me how big it is.
Are there any changes to the proposed lighting? I see ground lighting. I know that I actually was on the board when this sign was first approved and we had approved the granite pillars that create a monument ground sign. And I remember, believe it or not, because all of our signage, all of our freestanding signs have all migrated to this sort of style of kind of passive lighting. We certainly don't want any internal lit signs. Nothing's changing with respect to that. I can't tell by the design of bank.
I'm sorry.
Is that?
Nothing is changing for the lighting. It's going to be just a straight carved-out sign, exactly the same as the Providence Bank sign is now. It's just different colors. And it's a bit smaller, but we'll still keep the lighting that's there now. And that's not changing.
Very good. Was there anything else before I poll the members of the ZBA for their thoughts and comments or questions?
No, if anybody has any questions, please feel free.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Keys. Moving to the ZBA members of the board, having heard the presentation from Ms. Keys with respect to the bank prob, Providence Bank sign minor modification, I'll just move through our slate of members and just feel free to, any questions or comments you might have. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to make sure this is clear in my mind. So the move with the rebranding, the bank prob sign that's being proposed as shown in this updated application, so the sign itself will move from being an oval to the rectangular shape with bank prob? Or would that be, would bank prob be superimposed on an oval?
It's a carved sign.
Okay.
It will be rectangular and not oval.
Oval. Okay.
I believe that that's what the request was initially desired because it was changing the shape of the sign.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Moore?
Not at the moment.
All right. Mr. Delisle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the shape, is the prior application from, when was it? It was 2014. That was granted with an oval. The sign variance was granted for an oval shape. Is there a way that you can maintain that oval shape with the new proposed trade dress?
So the customer is trying to, again, update their branding, change the complete logo. They've changed the complete name. They're looking for a more updated shape. They're growing and they're hoping that everybody kind of takes the change.
Okay. Mr. Delisle, anything further on that question?
So that, I guess, yeah, I would just follow up with, so that means that the sign will be square and there's no wiggle room for, to maintain the oval shape?
I have proposed that to the client and they would like to keep the new square sheet within all of their locations. You will see, we're also doing Amesbury, which I have more meetings to attend this month. I've already done Seabrook and I believe Exeter. And they're all within the same means as this sign here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
Yes, I do have a concern about this because, you know, the original approval was for an oval shape. And, you know, is it under that premise that this is considered a minor modification? And because it's a change in shape, should we be considering it as a different kind of application? And this is more a question for Andy Port.
Ms. Webb, may I respond? I apologize for interrupting. I did bring this to the town and Caitlin had informed me that it should be only a request for minor modification because of the shape change of the sign.
Yeah, this is Andy. I could speak to that.
Hi, Andy. Thank you.
I would note, by the way, Jennifer Blancher, our zoning administrator, is on as well as Caitlin, our planner. Just a quick synopsis, if it was just the name change of the business, we would not consider that to be a change to the sign because that's just the business name changing. So if the panel remained the same as the Providence Bank existing when you're saying, that would just be a name change. But in this case, because they're changing the style and shape of the sign that was the subject of the prior approval, we essentially recommended, our staff recommended, that go back to the board. That's consistent with revising something that was on plans approved by the board. So, you know, I'm sure Jennifer would echo the same thing. I don't know if she had anything to add to that, but bottom line is this is not something that the applicant could do without the board's approval. And to Rachel's question, I think the question of whether or not you want to approve the shape change obviously is somewhat within your discretion, given that it's the subject matter that was previously approved was the style and shape of that sign. We leave it to you as to, you know, where that should fall. But we just wanted to make sure that the signage that was originally approved went back to the board for modification since it was encompassed by the prior permit.
Okay, thanks, Andy. And just to follow up, my main question was whether or not the sign was internally illuminated because although I can see the floodlight in the photo, it just looks like it could be illuminated the way the font style in the, just looks that way to me. You're saying it's going to be a wood material? Is that correct?
Yes, it's just an HDU raised border panel carved out. It's non-illuminated. We're keeping, we're keeping with the floodlight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further, Ms. Webb?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I guess a lot of the questions have been about the shape of this thing. You know, I've been to your website and I noticed that you, the bank's website, I should say. I noticed that they used to have this oval Providence Bank thing and they now have this kind of new look thing. I guess, I guess my, you mentioned the other towns you've talked to. Is this a general change that, you know, for all your branding, that you're going from oval to not oval? Is that basically how you're changing your brand?
Yes.
Okay. That's kind of my question. I also noticed there's an attendee with their hands up, although I don't know if maybe this is just a modification, minor modification, Rob. I don't know whether you were taking questions from the attendees, but there's been one person.
I see that as well.
I can't see anything.
I will, after we poll the board, I don't, I'll certainly acknowledge a raised hand though. Though I will say that this portion of the hearing is the business meeting. So we, it's, the public comment period is attached to each of the public hearings that will follow. But I certainly want to raise hand.
Right. I assume that was probably the case. I just wanted to point it out. No, that was really my only question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, Mr. Chanon?
No questions, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Vanovic?
Yeah, I think Rachel hit my question about the material of the sign, the high-density urethane. Just keeping with the same, the same, besides the shape, the same kind of character of it. So I think I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vanovic, and I suppose as the only member of the board, my colleagues that actually was at this hearing back in 2014, I remember this application, as I'd mentioned earlier. And I remember we, my colleagues on the board at the time were, you know, fairly adamant in creating a very careful approach to freestanding signs, especially in this entry corridor, which is seen as sort of a view corridor by those entering Newburyport. And it was important to create kind of an aesthetic that we felt was commensurate with the city and its architecture. So this whole, we have a granite post was part of that. I don't remember, to be honest, that we were terribly troubled by the shape, although it was an oval presented. I got to say, for me, I mean, I don't, you know, with greatest respect and we don't police, you know, we don't police aesthetics, right? But I, you know, I don't need to really take a position on whether I like better or like worse the shape of the branding, other than to say that it seems to be less massing in this configuration of a rectangle than the oval. And so as long as it's not illuminated internally and as long as the materials are carved and, you know, foam core or something commensurate to a longstanding wood, I'm actually okay with the minor modification proposal, despite the fact that I, you know, to be honest, I don't love the shape, but I kind of get it if it's a branding change. That's just my sentiment. Do any members of the board have any further comments or questions before I'll ask for a motion?
I do, actually. That's Rachel Webb. I'm just noticing, I'm looking at the graphic that's up on our screen and the bank name there with the, it's below the photos in the footer area. You know, it's showing with the address and the B is uppercase and the letter P is uppercase. And yet in the sign, it's all lowercase. Why is that different?
It will be all lowercase in the sign, Ms. Webb. It's the way that we store things in our system is by our proofs. They're stored in a specific format, excuse me, and we have to label them as such. Sometimes there's modifications in the way that we save them. And unfortunately, because we've done so much work for the Providence Bank prior to this, we have so many files, so we had to save it accordingly. But it will be as stated in the sign proposal here. Just as you see it in the proposed picture, that is an actual, that is actually what it will look like once it's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the members of the board? Hearing none. At this point, I see a raised hand among the attendees. Andy, could you unmute the mic of Mr. Fred Needhart? And Mr. Needhart, if you can hear us, just let us know?
And he has been unmuted. He'll just, I need to do it on his end.
Mr. Needhart, if you can see at the bottom left of your Zoom screen, you should see an icon of a microphone. If you could just click that.
Yeah, I, hello, I did not touch the microphone button to be recognized. I don't know what happened.
Oh, my, so my apologies. Then I think that if, Andy, how does one lower their hand? It sounds like Mr. Needhart didn't mean.
Sure, I can take care of that. I'll assist Fred with lowering his hand. Thanks, Fred.
Very good. Okay, we just wanted to make sure that we addressed that. Thank you, Mr. Needhart. Moving then back to the board, do we have a motion to approve? And just to let those in attendance know now, though I'll explain the rest of the format in a moment, because we operate under Robert's Rules of Order, a motion to, the way to move an application along for a vote of the board is always under Robert's rules in the form of a motion to approve, which doesn't necessarily mean that anyone must support it or vote to approve it. It's just the format, so it's semantics. And at that point, once it's seconded, we will poll the board as to their actual vote. So with that, do we have a motion from the board on the minor modification to the signage?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make the motion, the motion, a motion to consider the request minor and approve the minor modification to the variance for 66 St. Avenue, file number 214-054.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Okay, motion, thank you, Mr. Swanton. The motion is made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Be the request as a minor modification and approve the minor modification request on 66 St. Avenue. I will now call the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes as well. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it and the motion carries. The minor modification request is approved. Thank you very much, Ms. Keys.
Thank you all.
All right, have a good evening. So moving on. Thank you. Moving on to our next matter, this is where we'll move into the public hearings this evening. Just to outline for those listening in, if this is your first time in a ZBA or any Zoom municipal hearing here in Newburyport, the format is as follows. I will read the, in the form of the public notice, I will read the agenda description by applicant name as well as their representative, if they're being represented, the address, and then the file number, as well as a description of what the applicant is requesting. Once I read the notice of the application, we will then open it up to hear from anyone who is speaking on behalf of the application, whether it's the applicant herself or himself or whether it is someone on behalf of the applicant, representatives such as the attorney, architect, engineer, et cetera. After we hear the presentation from the applicant, we'll close that portion of the hearing, at which point we open it up to public comment. In the past, we have gone, you know, those who wish to speak in favor, then we've closed it and done those who wish to speak in opposition. What we're doing now and what I'd like to do is simply, if you wish to speak, whether for or against, feel free to say so or say not at all, but really just voice your comments. We do ask, when we open up the public comment section, to raise your hand by clicking the button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Mr. Andy Port, our planning director, will open up your mic and then just simply give us your name and your address so that our keeper of the notes will be able to record that. And then just feel free to tell us what's on your mind. We do ask that each member of the public in speaking to limit your remarks to under two minutes so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. After we close that portion of the public hearing, those who wish to speak for, against, or just speak, we will go from question, we will go to questions from the board. This is when members of the ZBA will pose questions to the applicant. The applicant's representatives oftentimes adapting questions that were posed by members of the public. So members of the public, if that's, if you're interested, that's how the questions you raise get manifest in the form of this process. Members of the ZBA will, if they have that same question or they have some version of it, they'll ask that question and elicit that information, after which we'll close that portion of the hearing. And this is when we move to deliberations. Deliberations is the segment of the public hearing when members of the public and all those who are attending get to listen to the ZBA discuss the application out loud. It's really when you get to hear us thinking out loud. All of the maturation's, discussions, questions, and positions of the members will be voiced and in the spirit of the open meeting law, in your full sort of observation and ability to listen in. After the members of the ZBA have deliberated on the details, we will close that portion of the public hearing, at which point we will, we will request that a member of the ZBA move the matter along by making a motion to approve, and again, under Robert's rules, that's how it would be advanced. A motion we made and then seconded, and then I'll call the roll. And the minimum of four votes in the affirmative is required for an application to be successful. So with that, we'll move through the agenda. We have a couple of matters that have been, we've received requests to continue. The first is the matter of 193 High Street, Hebellick Real Estate LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, and Costa. A request has been received to continue the matter to the hearing of December 8th. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard or just wish us to proceed on the request?
Please proceed on the request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Mead. So we have a question.
This is Mr. Delisle. I'm going to need to recuse myself from this matter.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. So Mr. Delisle will recuse himself on that vote, meaning that Mr. Chanon, you will be, you will step in as our voting fifth member? Okay, so we have, do we have a motion to continue the matter of 193 High Street to the meeting of 12/8/2020?
Yes, I'll move to continue. 193 High Street, appeal to the meeting of December 8th, 2020. That's application 2019-042.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. That's Mr. Shagnan.
Okay, a motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Shagnan. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle has recused himself. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries, the matter's continued to 12/8/2020. Thank you. Next is the matter of 68 Middle Street. That's Windward Shaw LLC, represented by Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, and Costa. A request has been received by the ZBA to continue the matter to the meeting of October 8th. A request has been received by the ZBA to continue the matter to the meeting of October 27th. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard?
Um, thank you. I, I'd just like to say that we have been working hard with the neighbors and Mr. Needhart is on here, where the plans are being revised. And so in order to give us plenty of time to do that and get them into the board in time, we're requesting it to continue until 10/27.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. Do we have a, a motion to approve the request to continue to 10/27?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
Rachel Webb, to continue the application of 68 Middle Street, case 2020-53 to the meeting, ZBA meeting of October 27.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. We have a second.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. A motion's made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. Five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries, the matter is continued to the meeting of 10/27/2020. Moving on to the matter of 190 High Street. This was an appeal brought by Mr. Eric Goodness. It is, we've received a request to withdraw that matter. I don't know if we have anyone who, to, who, who may be here on behalf of that application. Is there, Mr. Mr. Goodness, are you here and do you wish to be heard on the request to withdraw?
This is Andy Port. It does not look as if Eric Goodness is in the audience this evening, and I see no hands raised.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Port. Okay, so this matter, we can just proceed on, on the, on the request. We also typically, as a ZBA, unless there's prevailing reason or request, otherwise, we'll always consider a request to withdraw to be without prejudice. And so I would propose that we, we append that to the request. And is there, do we have a, a motion by any member of the board or any comments with respect to that proposed change?
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Delisle. I'm going to recuse myself from this matter as well.
Very good. I will, so Mr. Delisle has recused himself. Mr. Shagnan, you will, you will move up to fifth voting member for this request. Any further board comments in the alternative? Do we have a motion to approve?
This is Mr. Moore. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice for 190 High Street appeal, which is 2020-055.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. A motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. Five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries. The matter is, the request to withdraw without prejudice is approved. And thank you. Finally, the, to just jump to the next request to continue, it is the matter of, of 12-14 Harrison Street, the applicant Michael Gray. Is Mr. Gray in the audience and do you wish to be heard on the request?
This is Andy again. I do not see Michael Gray or his attorney, David, Mac in the audience, but we do have the request and I see no hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Port. Okay, we have the motion before the board to continue to 11, the meeting of 11/24/2020. Do we have a motion to approve?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make that motion. But I think the motion would be to December 8th, 2020. So I'll make the motion to continue the hearing on 12 through 14 Harrison Street, appeal to December 8th, 2020, and that's file number 2020-67.
You are correct. Yes, thank you, Mr. Delisle. That's, that should have been 12, the meeting of 12/8/2020. Do we have a second?
A second?
Go ahead. Who got that second? Sorry.
Mr. Swanton did.
All right, I'll take it.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. So the motion's made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Swanton on the request to continue. The applicant's request to continue the application of 1214 Harrison Street to the meeting of 12/8/2020. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Rachel?
Yes, hello. Sorry, I lost internet there for a moment.
No worries. And Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Wait, did I miss? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Swanton.
And yes, me too.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries, the matter is, the request to continue is, is approved for, to the meeting 12/8/2020. Thank you all very much for that bit of housekeeping. So leaving then the first substantive matter in the public, the public hearings, we have the application of 284 Water Street. The applicants Timothy and Wendy Higgins, care of Sarah, Attorney Sarah Wolf of Finneran and Nicholson PC. The docket is application 2020-0666. This is a special permit for nonconformities to construct a screened-in porch with insufficient front yard setback. And speaking on behalf of the applicant, we have Attorney Sarah Wolf, Attorney Wolf.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Sarah Wolf, attorney of Finneran and Nicholson PC, as mentioned here tonight, also with Matt Langus of Scott Brown Architects. I'm representing my clients, the petitioners, Tim and Wendy Higgins, with respect to their application for a special permit for nonconformities. This is for the construction of a sunroom consisting of less than 500 square feet total, which would be extending the pre-existing nonconforming front yard setback. So it's currently situated, the existing home is located on property, which we know as 284 Water Street. And this is located within the R2 zoning district, which is in the Joppa Flats area. Overlooks the Merrimack River from the landward side of the street. The existing home, as it's currently situated, is on a lot, which has over 20,000 square footage and lot area. Only 10,000 square foot is required for the existing single-family use. There are already in existence, nonconforming front and rear setbacks, but the property otherwise conforms to zoning in all other respects. So with this application, the petitioner proposes to construct a one-story, single-story, 205-square-foot enclosed porch, which would be located on the southerly side of the home, which fronts along Water Street. The front building wall of the proposed porch to be constructed will have a 14.5-foot setback from the front lot line, while the front building wall of the home right now is only nine feet from the front lot line at its closest points. So with regard to this application, the zoning administrator determined that due to the fact that the proposed upward expansion would extend that existing nonconforming front setback, the petitioners would be required to apply for a special permit for nonconformities pursuant to Section 9B2A of the zoning ordinance in Newburyport. So with this regard, the criteria that have to be met are first, that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity. And second, that the proposed change or changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure or use already is. So in this case, to address that first criteria, no new nonconformities are being created. As for the second element of the criteria to be met, the proposed home with the additional sunroom would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure as the home currently stands. The proposed construction here would not intensify any existing nonconformities. This proposal is really only for an extension along the front building wall. The proposed addition additionally, no pun intended, is proportionally quite small, given the very large size of the lot that it's currently situated on. This addition will not affect any light, air, or views for the neighboring landowners. Neighbor on the side closest to the addition has no objection, nor do any neighbors that we know of. This lack of any significant impact can be grounds for finding that the structure would not substantially be more detrimental. Supporting case law for this, I referred to Britton versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Gloucester, 2003 case, involved a board decision where the court upheld that a proposed project would be substantially more detrimental because the addition would have significant impact on the light, views, breezes, noises, odors, you name it. Right now, though, I'm going to let Matt take over, Matt Langus, to talk about the specific details of the proposal, which he is most familiar with, and then I'll take it back and wrap it up. Matt, over to you.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Wolf. Good evening, everyone, members of the board. My name is Matt Langus, the project architect from Scott Brown Architects, 38 Madison Street, Amesbury, for the record. To expand off of what Attorney Wolf had mentioned in her introduction, the project before you is a single-story sunroom addition. It's approximately 205 square feet and extends off of the existing breakfast room at the front corner of the main house. What we are proposing remains in character with the old-style colonial home. So we're showing tall, equally spaced windows with transoms above and a flat roof that's separated by layers of trim and measures at a height of 12 foot 9 from the mean grade. Originally, the addition was intended for an entirely different location. If you're looking at the existing front elevation shown on page EC 2.1, the plan for the initial design was actually to add it on to the smaller addition. So starting at the brick chimney and extending to the left. So although this addition, or this location rather, would have eliminated any need for dimensional relief, we felt that it made the home quite long and that the new location shown on page A 2.1 would not only be a more appropriate in proportion, but also just have a much stronger architectural relationship to the main house. With that, this concludes my proportion of the presentation, but I'm happy to address any questions or concerns. And if there are none, I'll turn it back over to Attorney Wolf.
Thank you, Matt. So Matt actually added on really nicely there. Thank you very much. So based upon the foregoing from Matt and from myself, the petitioner, you know, submits that the proposed structure won't be substantially more detrimental. It's not creating any new nonconformities. And we respectfully request that this board would grant petitioner's application for the special permit. If there are any questions, you know, I'm here to answer them, but that concludes our presentation.
Okay, this is Chair Champetti. Thank you, Attorney Wolf, and thank you, Mr. Langus, for the presentation. Now, moving to the next portion of the public hearing, this is the portion where we will ask any members, any members of the audience who wish to speak in either support or opposition or just simply wish to speak with respect to the application. If you can just do, just simply make yourself known by clicking, raise hand at the bottom of your screen, and we will acknowledge it. Anyone wish to speak for, against, or just simply speak with respect to this application? Going once, going twice. Seeing no hands, and I always try to delay that. We don't want to, if someone's fiddling with a mic or trying to figure that out, we always want to give them ample time to be able to acknowledge us. If, by the way, if, if you find yourself dealing with technology issues and, and you miss sort of the boat, as it were, just simply raise your hand, we will acknowledge it and, and we will try to address even sort of a late hand raise if it's still in that same segment of the meeting. Seeing no hands raised here, we will close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board.
This is Mr. Moore. I have one, well, a general question for Mr. Langus. Could you just go over the efforts that are going to be made to match the modest addition to the original house with respect to materials, windows, et cetera?
Sure, absolutely. So we're using the, the same exact, oh, well, matching the existing siding and trim. The, the windows right now are actually the, the same size. We're using sort of a similar style sash, although that is a little bit off in proportion with the transoms, but similar quality windows, similar trim. So the trim, the, the windows in the siding are all meant to match the existing character of the house.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't have any questions on this one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I have a question about the flat roof and if you're planning to do some kind of a roof deck up there or not.
There are no plans to do a roof deck at the moment. There's a window that's on the second floor is shown, and, and the reason for doing the, the flat roof is to avoid any possible intersection with that window.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton?
Uh, no, I have no questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Channen.
No questions, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Channen. I, I have no questions either. So we can close that portion of the public hearing and move to board deliberations. And I'll just remind the board, as I suspect you're all well aware, since this is an application for a special permit for nonconformities, the board must deliberate and find that there will be no addition of any new nonconformity in order to grant the special permit for nonconformities in the proposed. And we would need to make a finding based on the presentation of the applicant. And then the second component is that the board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming use or structure. And when we make that finding, the board can consider factors such as size, scale, massing, volume as compared to the other structures in the neighborhood, and that's under Section 9B2 of our zoning bylaws. And with that, we will open up deliberations. Mr. Moore?
I really have no problem with this proposal. Clearly, it's not creating new nonconformities as presented. And given the modest size of the addition at 200, about 205 square feet, I certainly don't see a problem with size, scale, massing at all with, with the neighborhood. So I can support this for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Yes, I would agree with Mr. Moore. Clearly, there's no addition of a new nonconformity. And I think that the addition as proposed is, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there currently. If there were to be a roof deck suggested, I think that I, I might feel differently. But as it's currently drawn and currently shown on the plans, I can support this application.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I agree with my colleagues. This is not going to be an addition of any new nonconformity. And it is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The location of the addition just really fills in an area of the footprint and it's not. I mean, the lot size is 20,000 square feet. It can definitely handle 200-foot addition.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton?
Uh, yeah, I too can support this. I think my colleagues have said it quite well. I mean, I would add, in addition to the large lot size, this, this place has a lot of frontage as well. And, you know, I'm familiar with this place. I walked by it and it's, uh, actually think it's a very tasteful addition. It will be an enhancement to the neighborhood, but it certainly doesn't diminish the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. And Chairman Champetti, I, I agree. And I will also add that this application does not appear to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance in, under our city's bylaws. So with that, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and I will call for a, do we have a motion to approve the application for special permit for nonconformities?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for 284 Water Street, application number 2020-066.
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
Thank you. A motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Ms. Webb, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries. And the application for special permit for nonconformities for 284 Water Street is approved. Thank you very much to Attorney Wolf and Mr. Langus. Good luck to Mr. and Mrs. Higgins.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, the next matter on our public hearing is the matter of 1 Williamson Avenue, Boyle and Company LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, attorney Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. The application is made for a special permit, application number 2020-068, to renovate an existing attached garage to create an in-law apartment. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, Costa, 30 Green Street, on behalf of Chris Boyle, Boyle Construction, for Elizabeth Wilson, who's the owner of the property. So this property is located in the R2 zoning district at 1 Williamson Avenue, which is, you're driving down Low Street and you go up Williamson. It's the first, one house up on the left after the. It's the first, one house up on the left after the house that's on the corner. So if you go to the next slide, Andy. So the application is to convert the existing garage into an in-law apartment. The property has existing nonconforming front yard setback, but this isn't being altered or extended. There will be no changes to the existing dimensions or the footprint. And the square footage of the proposed in-law apartment will be 571 square feet. Just so you know, the setback, front setback, is required to be 25 feet, and the current setback is 23.2 feet. So under the ordinance, under Section 12A-C of the ordinance, we meet the requirements for the square footage for an existing structure. So if you could move to the next slide, please, Andy. So on the lower part of this plan is the property. And you can see we've highlighted the existing two-car garage that is connected by a breezeway to the main structure. And that footprint is not changing. Andy, if you could go to the next slide, please. These are the existing elevations. So the only changes you're going to see are on the east elevation, which faces the front. The garage doors are going to go away. And on the west elevation that faces the rear, there's going to be a door added. And if you could go to the next slide, please. And there you go. So you see the change. They add windows to the front elevation instead of the garage doors. And there's an additional egress in the back on the west elevation. Thank you. Go to the next slide. And here's the floor plan. So you can see, it's really, it's really a studio in-law. As you can see, the bedroom is kind of back in the corner there, and there's a little kitchenette and a bathroom. So it's a very small in-law apartment. The person that is going to occupy this in-law apartment, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, is the niece of the elderly woman who lives in the main house. So if you can go to the next slide, Andy, I think it's important you can see the context. So here, this is from My Maps, and you can see the parking areas here I wanted to show. So there are two parking spaces in front of the garage now in-law apartment, which obviously has plenty of room. That's not going to change. And then there's an additional parking area that exists on the side of the property, which will have obviously room for more than three cars in total in both of those areas, which is required under the ordinance. If you go, next slide, please. And this is just another view down the street from Google Maps. So you can see the parking areas. And the next one, please, Andy. And then that's the main parking area in front of the garage. So if you go to the next slide, please. The requirements for an in-law apartment is that it be occupied by grandparents, grandparents, sons, daughters, someone related by blood. And in this instance, it's the owner's niece. She is very close to the owner, helps take care of her. In our opinion, would be the equivalent of somebody who is like a child to the owner, in her opinion, and certainly related by blood. And there's a strong need and desire for this arrangement is stated in the ordinance. It's interesting, the ordinance says, "The intent of this section is to allow parents and their children to live together where the need and desire so exists, so long as the proposed living arrangement is not outweighed by any adverse impact upon the community, particularly the proliferation of unlawful rental units," which, of course, this would not be. And then it also goes to talk about relationships by blood. So in this instance, we believe we meet the first criteria of the ordinance. You go. Then, the next is that the gross floor area isn't any larger than 700 square feet for existing, and this is 571 square feet. We meet all the dimensional requirements of the property. It's a pre-existing nonconforming, and we're not, we're not changing that. So it's a legal structure. The zoning board is permitted to impose reasonable conditions, which, and must include at least the number of parking spaces plus one for the unit. So as I noted earlier, it has the required two parking spaces, and we're adding one. And then we are meeting all health and safety and building codes. Will be met with the construction. Obviously, we'll pull a building permit that's required. And then there are a number of commitments that are in Section F to J. And I will go through those, which the applicant is required to comply with. And then the first is that the special permit, if it's granted, will be recorded at the registry, which of course it will. And then on the 11th and 23rd months following the grant, it has to be renewed, and the applicant will comply with this requirement. And then the special permit will expire. If it's not renewed in three years, the applicant will comply with that requirement. If there's, if it expires or stops being used as a in-law apartment, the kitchen or kitchen appliances that have been added have to be removed. The applicant would agree to comply with that requirement. And then the board can order inspections as it deems appropriate upon reasonable written notice to the homeowner. And of course, the applicant would agree with this requirement. In addition, I provided today, and they were late in the afternoon, so I'm not sure if Caitlin or Diane were able to get them over to you, but two letters of support, one from 7 Williamson, which is, as you're facing the house immediately on the right, and one from 214 Low Street, which is opposite the house on Williamson, on the corner of Low and Williamson. So there are two letters of support that have been provided to the board. With that, we hope that the board would grant this special permit for an in-law apartment in the existing structure as proposed. And thank you very much.
Okay, Attorney Mead, thank you very much. Was there anything further before we move, move it on?
No, not at this time.
Great. Okay, so closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll now open up the, the public hearing to comments from members of the public. Again, if you wish to speak in support or opposition or to simply speak, please just raise your hand, bottom right of your participant's screen, and Mr. Port will unmute your mic, and we will recognize you. Anyone wishing to speak in support or opposition or simply speak in connection with the application for an in-law apartment special permit for 1 Williamson Avenue? Seeing no hands, going once, going twice. There being no hands, I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and open up questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. I just have one question. As far as the parking's not changing in front of what is the old garage, will the, will the hardtop be diminished at all, or is that going to stay the same?
Nothing is, nothing is changing outside the windows and the door and the interior of the garage. Everything else will be staying the same.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just a little concerned on the Section A of the ordinance with respect to the occupation of the in-law apartment by a parent, grandparent, child, or grandchild. And I think that that phrase, after that word grandchildren, separated by the comma, by blood or by marriage, modifies those four things and doesn't expand it. So I'm a little concerned here about the relationship, especially in connection with Section G of the ordinance, which requires the applicant to, in the 11th and 23rd month, to go to the building department and certify under the pains and penalties of perjury that A, Section A, is correct. So if you could explain how that would work to me, I would appreciate that.
I will. So I think that, so first of all, if the board grants the permit, having complied with the ordinance, I don't, I don't have an issue at all with Section G. But in addition, you know, it's interesting, the title of this section is called in-law apartment. And technically, of course, an in-law isn't related by blood. But we have, the board has granted plenty of, of in-law apartment permits for in-laws. And so I think that the purpose of the ordinance is to provide family members to live together and provide care for one another. And of course, the city is looking at potentially expanding this a little bit to encourage additional housing and affordable housing arrangements for both people who want to age in place in the city. But in this instance, the, the person is a niece. They're very forthright about that. But essentially, is the, treated as the daughter of this, of Elizabeth, who is the owner of the house, and is related by blood to her. And so I understand what you're saying about the comma. But I think that the purpose and intent of the ordinance is to, is to make sure that a living arrangement exists. And if you go up to the upper part, that it's not outweighed by the adverse impact on the community, to take particularly a proliferation of unlawful rental units, which, of course, this would not be. But the idea is to allow people to age in place together as a family. And in this instance, you know, I believe that the board in the past, and, and obviously, the zoning code enforcement officer believed, as she has approved this for a special permit application, that this is a relationship by blood, and the woman is treated as a child of the aunt, even though she's a niece. And I believe it fully complies and falls within Section A.
I completely understand what you're saying about the familial relationship. And I, you know, I feel as though that this is probably a wonderful arrangement that would, that would occur. However, I just don't think the ordinance says, says that it allows for a collateral descendant as opposed to a lineal descendant. So I'm having trouble with that. And with your respect to in-laws, I think that one in-law is always related by blood to one of the, the members of the married couple. So I'm a little confused by that comment. And then with regard to Section G, I still don't understand how, how the homeowner has to go into the planning office on the 11th and 23rd month and swear under the pains and penalties of perjury that Section A is, the obligations there are met. If you could explain that to me, I just don't understand how that works.
Sure. If the board finds that the proposed relationship falls under Section A, then they can certify when they go in under Section G that the, it complies with the permit that was granted, and the board had determined that the relationship existed and complies with, with Paragraph G, Paragraph A.
Otherwise, I have no problems with this application. And no further questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Webb, Ms. Webb.
I, I do not have any issues with this application. I think it's a great opportunity for, as, as Attorney Mead has pointed out, for the applicant to age in place with a family member related by blood. Mr. Delisle's points are very interesting. But I think, you know, the intent of the ordinance is definitely to enable family members to support other family members to stay in their homes long-term. And this scenario is achieving that.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I, I'm very sympathetic here. I mean, I was a caregiver once for a number of years, and my heart goes out to every caregiver. It is, it's a lot of responsibility. And I can understand how these folks want to make this work. I, I guess I have a question. I'm not sure I have a question for Attorney Mead. I have a question perhaps for our planning department or somebody who could please help me deal with the issue that my colleague, Mr. Delisle, brought up. I mean, I, I'd like to vote for what I think's the intent of this bylaw, that this niece is a family member, but that's not what the, that's not what the zoning ordinance says. And so could, I don't know, Andy or Jennifer or somebody, Caitlin, explain? I don't get it. Are we allowed to interpret this bylaw as we'd like it? Or do we have to administer it as it's written?
Well, this is Andy. I won't speak with the zoning administrator, Jennifer Blanchet, who's here this evening, or Kate Sullivan, our planner, his planning director. I, I think that some of the provisions in a lot of local communities are written and perhaps interpreted too restrictive. And I think that whether the courts have currently or will in the future deem some of those provisions invalid, because they're too restrictive in trying to define what a family is in today's modern age. I think that may be a problem, you know, we see down the road or revision to the language that we see down the road. I do agree with you that I think the language as originally written and probably adopted by the council had contemplated a more restrictive interpretation of that, I think. But at the same time, I certainly do not object to the proposal here. And I think that frankly, from not just the ordinance here, but also in other communities that I've seen, I'm not sure that those provisions will be upheld at some, at least at some future date if taken to court.
If I could, Andy, this is Rob Champetti again. And I'd like to hear from Jennifer Blanchet. I see that she's among our panelists. I just want to maybe give, if we can unmute Jennifer's mic and just get her quick thoughts on this. I have thoughts of my own as well that I'll share.
Hi, this is Jennifer Blanchet. I, I do understand that the language of the ordinance is very restrictive in this case. I think this applicant has been extremely forthcoming in what the relationship in actuality is. That will be part, that is part of their application, and therefore, it is part of the legal record. Therefore, moving forward, should the individual occupying that unit change, they would need to come to the city. Should there be any complaint or need for enforcement, and we would, should we find that it be anyone but this niece or a direct, you know, blood family member, there would be enforcement. So from my perspective, you know, and as Andy indicated, our ordinance may be a little too restrictive to be backed up should there be an issue or a challenge to it. And therefore, it was put forward under this provision of the ordinance.
All right. Ms. Blanchet, thank you very much for that, that insight. I'll, I think, did we, have we heard from Mr. Swanton yet?
Yeah, I asked that question. I'm good.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Swanton. And so that brings it to me, and I'll just share that for what it's worth. I, I agree with the consensus that, that we as a board certainly have certain discretionary powers. And while there is a rigor to the letter of the ordinance, there's also a rigor to the spirit of the ordinance. And that's why we have, you know, individuals and not bots that sit on these boards and commissions. It's so that we can run through the lens of life and ourselves and our individual experiences, you know, the proposals, and try to find the, you know, the empathy and the organic sort of spirit of the ordinance while being true to the rigor of the law. And in this instance, I'm moved by the, the fact that I find, under these circumstances, and we may all find that, should I have any colleagues that agree with me in this sentiment, that, you know, there should, there might be some court in some imagined future that, that, you know, determines that we have erred in our discretion. But unless and until that happens, I'm willing to, to put out there that I believe that it is within the spirit and the intent of our ordinance that we allow for the, the residents of, of individuals to age in place and facilitate the, the fluid and malleable dynamic of the family unit as it continues to remain fluid and malleable, you know, and change with the times. And I think this is a perfect case in point of how that happens. You know, the notion that it be an in-law and only an in-law seems inconsistent with the spirit of that. And I think that it's certainly within our ability, should we choose to, to run this and read this through the organic lens of the details and the circumstances. I think these applicants have made a very palpable case that a niece is equivalent to a child, equivalent of a child to an owner related by blood. This is a, a circumstance where we have to, I think we are, we are well-served to take note of the details. And these details, for me, very powerfully say, this is the spirit of this part of the ordinance. Though some future court may determine that I'm wrong, I'm willing to, you know, take that position now. So I certainly support it for those reasons as well. Any, any members of the board wish to add anything further? Seeing no hands. Do we have? Seeing no hands, do we have a a motion to approve?
This is Rachel Webb. I'll make a motion to approve. Let's say, sorry. Make a motion to approve One Williamson Avenue. Case 2020-68 special permit renovating existing attached garage to create an in-law apartment.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So the motion is made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore.
Sorry about that, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle.
No.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I think my experience as a caregiver has moved me to a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton and Rob Champetti. I vote yes. That's four in the affirmative, one in the negative. The eyes have it the motion carries and the application for special permit. To renovate an attached garage to create an in-law apartment, 2020-068, One Williamson Avenue. Is approved. Thank you, members of the board, and thank you, Attorney Mead, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on then to the last matter on our agenda. I will note for the record that I will be recusing myself on the the board discussion component that is number four of on our. On our agenda this evening. And we'll be turning over the virtual gavel to to our vice chair, Mr. Moore. Because it's the last matter on the agenda, I will also be bidding good night to you all. I will leave the the Zoom meeting and leave it to. Mr. Moore to to handle that last application matter as well as the final closing of our meeting. Thank you all very much and have a good meeting and Mr. Moore, the gavel is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. As the chairman aptly stated, this is the the final item on the agenda tonight. And it is a for 468th Street Special Permit Nonconformities. Application 2020-30. This. Application was approved at our 98 meeting. This is actually going to be an open discussion. In of a board discussion and deliberation. That's that will be considering reopening. The application in the public domain. And there's the reason behind this, I think, for for applicants, I mean, for attendees that are still out there. First of all, should know that this is simply a nice way for the public to see and hear what what the board is thinking with this open discussion. And deliberation. Public comment is is not appropriate or sought of any kind, and. We will be going over an issue that came up after the 98 meeting during the public review process. And this is a nice review from our planning department that I thought made a lot of sense to. To use as an intro for anyone still listening on this, as opposed to with the interested parties, of course, listening in. The applicant submitted a floor area ratio density comparison map, and this has been something. That the board had been asking for. In multiple meetings before the 98 decision in helping us to decide or helping the board to decide on the appropriateness of the proposal. A member, Ken Swanton and other board members expressed during, expressed mostly during the last two meetings of their concern. With the data that was being provided to analyze the the floor area ratio or the FAR. It's also important to note that during the meeting, the board approved the project. That the department, the plan department had been contacted by a neighbor expressing some concerns. Which were in line with Mr. Swanton, and in fact, I believe this is the immediate butter who who in that final meeting at 98. Was a little incredulous as to how some of the numbers were put together for his property in particular, so that raised some concerns with Mr. Swanton as well. And finally, the the decision on this project has not been issued yet. And in light of the information that Mr. Swanton. Or the work that he put in on putting some information together, we thought it was appropriate to have an open discussion as a board over his findings. In order to determine whether as a board, we wanted to reopen this for public discussion. Or let the the original. Application decision stand as of the decision made on 98. So with that. I know haphazard introduction as as I could have put this together. We're going to open this up to to Mr. Swanton to discuss briefly what his findings were on the FAR and where his concerns were. After our decision. Before we we get into that, though, I will ask first that that Andy Port, if he if he had anything to add to that. To clean it up a little bit. Now is the time to speak, and then after that, of course. We are going to be using the guidance of Attorney Jonathan Eichman from KP Law to make sure that. That everything we do moving forward this discussion is done properly. So Andy, if you had any thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just per, I think, a conversation we had earlier today, I just wanted to make sure that in whatever action the board does, whatever discussion it does, it does so. Procedurally as guided by Copeland Page. So Jonathan is here this evening to make sure that if you have any questions along those lines, that you can answer them. And as I understand it, and Jonathan, feel free to jump in. The first question foremost for the board should be whether to reopen the hearing. Any question about reconsideration obviously would would follow in in a hearing process if the hearing reserve is reopened. But I think there obviously needs to be some sort of explanation, I assume, tonight in order to. Of the the issue that might be involved with the missing, the information that might be needed for reopening of the hearing. For the board to make a determination as to whether or not to reopen the hearing. So I think that's where Ken's review comes in. I'll refer to Jonathan if he has any thoughts on procedural steps or any other considerations the board might want to have.
Thank you. This is John Eichman from KP Law, Mr. Chairman of the Board. Do you want my comments now on this? Could be some assistance?
I think would be helpful in in shaping, you know, the discussion after we. Try to digest what Mr. Swanton might have for us.
Sure. So the way this is has been presented to me. Mr. Swanton. Came forward with this information, and I believe it's been distributed to the board. A collection of his. His research with the assessor's office. And comparing on FAR and comparing that to the the application materials that were submitted by the applicant. The information Mr. Swanson submitted or wants the board to consider was submitted after the public hearing was closed. And also submitted after the vote was taken. So in essence, this is, we would call after submitted information. The board may consider this information if it so chooses. To do so, in my opinion, it needs to reopen the public hearing because this is relevant information. It should be considered in the public hearing process. Board is not required to consider after submitting information, can simply say we've closed the public hearing. We had the information we needed. We're going to continue on the course that we have already set. So I think at this point, as Andy pointed out, it's really up to the board. This information has been brought forward. Do we want to consider this information as part of this application in a public hearing process? That would be a decision for the board to make. If that is a yes. Then the public hearing would have to be reopened with whatever notice is required, and if continuity of notices then. Has stopped, then hearing notes would have to be reissued as if it was a new hearing. Once that happens, then of course you can continue with the the public hearing on this application. And having considered this material, I'd decide whether you want to reconsider your initial vote. So I think that's where we are at this point. Andy asked for my help and assistance with the procedural issue, so I think that's what I'm primarily outlining here. I did not look at or weigh in on the actual question, substantive question raised by Mr. Swanson here, which would be the comparison of the FAR.
And Jonathan, this is Andy. If you could, just for the board. I I do think Ken had put together some slides sort of summarizing his review and his thoughts on the FPR analysis. Would, in your opinion, would it be appropriate to review those or have Ken review those for the rest of the board members in making their judgment whether to reopen the hearing?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Again, with, as long as everyone understands that. The information is being submitted to the board. For its determination as to whether the hearing should be reopened to have given full consideration. So discussion of the substantive aspects of this. Should should be withheld at this point. Really, the question before the board is, is this something that we should take into consideration now? Before we issue a decision on this matter.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. I think with that, we will proceed to Mr. Swanton with, I guess, a summary or brief overview of what he found.
Okay, thank you very much. I have some, a slide set to go through here with what I found to talk about the use of neighborhood FAR, basically. At this hearing that we had on September 8th, when we reviewed the 468th Street Plum Island application. First little background, if we, to remind us all, we go to the next slide, Andy. This started back on July 14th. The first hearing we had was actually postponed several times from May, but the first hearing we had was in July. And it was for a proposal to demolish the house shown on the left there, which had an existing FAR of .21. And replace it with a two-story house with a FAR of .30. Which was above the city's flooring ratio of .25. So at this meeting, the ZBA members expressed concern. With the proposed FAR and asked to see data on the neighbors. So a month later on the next slide. As you may recall. We had our second hearing on August 11th, and we saw this chart, this map. That showed. I guess in total, I think we counted about 150 properties in this map of which some were selected to identify FARs for. And the red ones were above the .30 that was proposed. And the black ones were below. The applicant also, in this meeting, revised their proposed FAR on their house, on their proposed house from .3 to .32. As they had calculated incorrectly. During the discussion, we asked, we noticed that the house, the proposed house here, which is grayed in. We didn't see a lot of FAR numbers for the houses around it, so we asked the applicant to please. You know, this looks like an interesting chart, but please do it for the immediate vicinity of the house. So that got us to the third hearing, which is on the next page. And this is what we saw. And here you got the same grayed-in house there at. 468th Street. And they did the FAR calculations for all the houses around it. And in this case now, out of the 23 homes, 13 of them were colored in red. They were above the .32 FAR that was proposed for this house. And only four of the houses. Were within the city's .25 FAR regulation. So I mean, it clearly looked like the whole neighborhood was already dense. So on the next slide. Shows our decision. Basically, we voted after we saw that information, we voted five to nothing to approve. And I think our minutes are very important here because they show that this neighborhood FAR data that we had in front of us when we voted that night was pivotal. I mean, Mr. Delisle said in yellow here that he was among the group that had asked for the FAR study, and upon seeing the results, he had no questions. In light of the information provided, the applicant has met the requirements. Ms. Webb said she was satisfied with the provided data, and she'd like to see the assessor's information. To add the FAR calculations for the whole island. I remember she said that, and I sort of thought that would be a good idea. I said the board would not be able to deny an applicant with a FAR that is consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, and Mr. Moore also said. That he appreciates the new information, which shows the proposal would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Lot of consistency there that this was very pivotal, this information. Now, on the next slide shows there was another person who spoke at this meeting. Who was the only abutter who spoke. Which identified themselves as being at House 15, which is, as you can see in the map here, right next to. The applicant's house. And Lot 15 is actually a double lot, and I think it's interesting what they said as highlighted down here in yellow. They said they had a hard time believing the FAR on their house exceeds the standard. They asked what values were used. And the response from the applicant's architect was, oh, we used the gross floor area of 3,400 square feet from the assessor's data. To which the owner of this house said, I don't know how you got that. That would be a strange number. So that's what happened at the hearing. After the hearing, I got to thinking about everything that just happened. And on the next slide, I I looked into to remind ourselves, what is the definition that we should be using? For FAR for floor area, and this is right out of the zoning ordinance. Floor area. Gross shall mean the total square feet of floor space within the outside dimensions of a building. Including each floor level without any deductions for halls and closets and things. So if you take that definition now and you look at the various houses that were in this study, let's go back, for example, on the next page. To House 15. Here's actually a picture of House 15. You can see where the 3,400 came from. In fact, there it is in the middle. It's the assessor's gross. It's actually 3,440. But it's made up of not just the living area, but also the decks, the open porch, the canopy, the attic. If you add all those things up, you get 3,400, you divide it into the square footage, you do indeed get .38. And that's why this house was colored in red. But if you don't include all those extra things, it's only .21. Now, to really understand how this works, I I did talk to our zoning enforcement administrator, and she was very helpful. And she said, yeah, decks, decks should not be included. That's not in the enclosed space. And certainly not the open porch either that's shown here in the picture or the canopy. But she indicated the pull-down attic was a little trickier because. The ordinance, the zoning ordinance is not real crisp on what, how much of an attic is included. So in that case, where it's silent, you go to the to the building code, and that indicates where there's headroom, you count it. So in that attic, you can kind of see on the end of the drawing there that in the middle of the attic, maybe you can stand up. But certainly not on the two edges. And actually, the way the math works on this thing is if about a third of that attic is headroom. Then it still gets within the .25. FAR. So I'm not surprised the owner of this house stood up and said, gee, I thought I was in compliance. In contrast, if you look at 468th Street. They had a FAR of .32, but they did not include their decks. Or whatever else the assessors may conclude needs to be added in here. And that's appropriate for the for the FAR definition. So that was done correctly at .32. The .38 was not, though. We were looking. At apples and oranges here. We were looking at incomparable numbers. And it wasn't just this house. If you go to the next page. It was every house in that FAR study was overstated. They all had areas that should not be counted. Most Plum Island houses have decks. In fact, 20 of these 23 houses had decks. All of them were counted. None of them should have been counted in this FAR study. A lot of them had sheds and garages and even carports, and those things were counted. They should not have been counted. And then you get into the low headroom areas, the half stories and the three-quarter stories and attics and basements, all of which were counted, and many of those areas should not have been counted. So I think that rather than most of the neighbors being colored in red and over the proposed .32. I think most were probably under the city's. .25 maximum. Most of them, I think, were probably in compliance. I say probably because, to be sure, you you can't really calculate a FAR without seeing. The floor elevations to determine headroom. Now, my next slide is something I just sort of realized this afternoon in looking at these two drawings. If you look at the picture on the left, this is the map we saw in August, the first time they did it. But it's not the whole 150 houses. It's just the houses right around the applicant. There's the applicant's house colored in dark gray. You'll notice there's four other houses, one of which is colored in red because it's over the FAR, and the other four are not. Now, when you go the exact same area to the September map, all of a sudden, all five houses are colored in red. And how can that be? They're the same houses. And if you dig into it, because they did provide the data that went with these charts. You see that the square footage they used in these two maps on these two different dates for the exact same houses was different. In the August FAR map, for example, on the first one at 1070th Street, they used 1,656 square feet. And that same house was shown as 3,209 square feet in September, and that's why it got colored in red. What happened, if you look at the assessor data, in 1656, the first number, back in August, all those numbers came from the assessor's records for the living area, the much more conservative definition of square footage, and typically what realtors use when they sell a house. They describe your living area, not your attics and all the other things, and decks and stuff. The numbers on the right that were used in September were the gross square footage, including the decks and everything else. No wonder the whole neighborhood got colored in red, or much of it, most of it. So, I, something happened between August and September, and I say up top that the FAR data went bad between those two dates. My last slide is just my little summary of why I think we need to reopen this hearing, because, as I described, that neighborhood FAR data that was used was pivotal in our unanimous decision to approve this, and yet the data has now, appears to be wrong. The next reason is so that we can ask the applicant to explain what happened. Maybe there's something I'm missing. Maybe there's a reason that this happened that's not obvious. The other thing is, now that we've uncovered this, if we're going to be fair, in addition to asking the applicant, we should ask the abutters to comment on this new information. And once we've heard from both sides, then I think we could make a quality decision on whether to let our decision stand, or whether we think it was based on faulty information. And that's basically what my concern is, and I thank you for letting me raise it.
Thanks very much, Mr. Swanton. It's a very interesting work. Given this presentation, and given the advice from Mr. Eichmann, I believe the, the only question that the board has right now is to make a determination as to whether we, we are going to reopen this to a public hearing process. Does anyone have any comment?
Chairman, this is Mr. Shag, and I just wanted to, yes, comment to the presentation, and then thank you, Mr. Swan, for all that work. I think one of the things that concerns me is, you know, obviously, this data, like a lot of statistical data, can be modified, tweaked, changed, to suit any, you know, direction someone might want to go. And in the example that Mr. Swan was using, that attic, he had subtracted the attic out of 1,000 square feet. If you put it back in, because of the way the, the rule is written, this house does indeed break .30 again. So I, I think, I think we, we could end up going down a pretty good-sized rat hole with this data. And I do remember during the presentation that Attorney Mead made the comment that the first, the first time they looked at this data, they used the living area, and when they read the ordinance, they realized it's not living area, it's gross square footage, and they went right to the assessor's data. So I, I, I think, if, if anything, they tried to use the way the ordinance was written. And with that said, I'm a little uncomfortable, you know, running down a rat hole with this for a decision that was already made. I agree, it would be nice if the assessor's office were to correct the data to, to be more compliant with what we're looking for. I don't know how you fix things like headroom in a house and headroom in a basement. Someone would actually have to do that calculation, so it's difficult. Those are just my comments, my read on this.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any, any comments?
This is Mr. Delisle. I, I'm a little bit confused. Who's, I think, between Mr. Swanton and Mr. Mr. Shag, and I thought what Mr. Swanton said was that the attic, you only use the part that would be, have adequate headroom, which wouldn't be the whole 1,000 square feet. Is that right, Mr. Swanton? Would just be a portion of that?
I believe you said a third.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, the, the direction I got from our code enforcement officer was that you only use the part with six feet of headroom. And I was simply making the observation that you obviously can't stand up in the whole thing, just looking at the side of it, but you're never going to know for sure without seeing construction drawings. I, I can certainly imagine, if we reopen the hearing, I wouldn't be at all surprised to see the person who stood up at the hearing who owns this house indicate that, yeah, they, it does meet the requirement. I, I do think, you know, it's not just the attic, including the decks in all these houses. I mean, there's, there's no way the deck should have been included. And it's, you know, I, anyway, I hope I answered your question, Mr. Delisle.
Yes, thank you. I, I think that, you know, we need to make sure, as a board, that the data and the representations that are being made to the board are correct and are, are being compiled honestly and properly. And I, I think that, you know, we need to, we ask some questions in connection with this, with this application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Does anyone else have any, any comments? In reaction to what we've seen, what we've heard?
This is Andy. Could I offer something?
Please do.
Hey, I, obviously, the board has to have a discussion about this particular FAR analysis and what to do about it. I, I think, to me, though, it goes back to comments that we've raised previously about whether to approve expansions on Plum Island at all, at this point, recognizing silver rise and things like that. My concern would actually be, looking back at this more globally, is, does it really make sense, rather than getting into the weeds of looking at FAR analysis and how that is done, which I agree, this analysis shows that, you know, there's some poor use of data, inaccurate data, and, and it can be sort of contorted to, you know, suit a certain argument. To me, the real lesson here, I think, going back in time, is, does it really make sense to even look at FAR for adjacent properties, and, you know, get into the weeds over that, when determining whether or not a proposed development on a particular lot, the subject that's in question, is proposed, because I think that you, you risk running into a pretty obvious argument everyone's going to make, which is, well, my neighbor has a house this big, or wants to have a house this big, or just got permitted for one, therefore, I should too. And to me, that would just multiply endlessly on Plum Island. That seems to run contrary to the actual purposes of the ordinance. If you go back and read the purposes of the Plum Island overlay district, to me, that, that gives me pause when I think about whether the ZBA should be granting variances for expansions on the island. I think this FAR analysis, you know, the postmortem analysis of that hearing process illustrates that, you know, data can be used to suit various outcomes, depending on what you're trying to show. And I think that what happened between the several meetings earlier on was there was, the board got, you know, stuck in a sort of a rut, if you will, debating how the FAR analysis should be done throughout the neighborhood, which is a totally valid point to bring up. But I think that I always try to take a step back more globally with these issues and see, you know, what's the bigger picture here? And to me, the bigger lesson learned, that I would, I would hope stays with the board, regardless of this matter, is, one, being critical of what information is provided and how accurate and relevant it is. And, and in terms of relevancy, the more particular part of it, is it relevant to the relief that's being requested here? In this case, the, the question was, is this proposed development more detrimental to the district? And what was being proposed, or what was being shown as evidence of that not being a problem, was, well, the neighbors all have big houses. So I just wanted to point that, that issue out.
Thank you. All good points. Does anyone else have anything to, to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Andy's comment.
Sure.
I'm very sympathetic, Andy, with your comment about overdevelopment on Plum Island. You know, one after another, if, if larger houses go in, it adds up to a lot over, over the years. But I still think there's a problem. If somebody gives us data that is, shows us that the whole neighborhood's colored red, is very dense, and then it turns out the data was wrong. I think the basic decision, when the data was, appears to be clearly wrong, we won't know unless we open it up and ask them. But to base, to have that decision stand when we were misled, in my opinion, I think is not something we should be doing. We should be encouraging people to give us good quality data that we can make a good decision on. If we find out later that the decision was, that the data was wrong, I, I, I don't, I don't think we should just, you know, try to get the next one. I think we should stop and ask, hey, what's going on? Is there something we're missing? Is the data, why did you show that data? Because that was what, if you go back and listen to the tape, that's what carried the day, that chart. And I, I think it's, it's, we should be looking into it.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. And I, I just will take a moment to, to chime in with compelling argument for, for reopening the, the hearing, in that I, I agree that, you know, if we're going to make a, a decision based on data, and the, the ordinance, especially as it is with the PIOD requirements, includes this, it's really hard, I think, as a board, to call a hard stop on things if it's in the ordinance, and just say, well, we know now, we're not supposed to, to consider this, because it's globally not the thing to do. And while I get the, the desire to not encourage a lot of growth on the island, it, the FAR is in the ordinance. It's something that, that is considered, that is presented, and I'm, I'm kind of maybe of the opinion that if we can't depend on the data and don't have a mechanism to call someone out if they are misrepresenting in their application what they're doing, then we're kind of rubber-stamping everything. So anyway, that's my, my two cents there on that.
I have a few things to say. This is a very interesting discussion, first of all. And secondly, I'd like to commend Mr. Swanton for his tireless analysis on this subject. I think it was excellent work. And the fact that with this particular application, the decision has not been written up, or finalized yet, gives us a certain window. I think, I think we need to reopen this. I really do. I think the data speaks very loudly that, you know, we were, we were operating under erroneous data. And although I hear, Andy, what you were saying about how, you know, we should be just looking at the, the case before us on its own, and look at it within the larger context of the whole island and development, I'm not feeling right about moving forward without relooking at this, because of the data being incorrect. I think that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. Is, is anyone else looking to make a comment, add to the discussion, something that we haven't covered, or talked about in the, on the grander subject of looking at this from the macro, should we perhaps reopen this for a public hearing process?
This is Brendan Banovic. I'd like to just add a few comments.
Please.
Real quick.
Yep.
I, I agree with the work that Ken did. I think it was impressive. I think reopening the case will allow us to probably gain further clarity on this FAR calculation, because I think with the Plum Island overlay district, this is going to come up again in the future, and having, being able to talk through this in a lot more detail, I think, will give us an opportunity to really hammer down this equation. Even, it is listed out in there, but I think there is, as we found, a lot of gray, and being able to talk through this and, you know, figure, and learn from this case, I think, will help us quite a bit. So I, I do kind of agree with Ken on that, and I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Banovic. Did I have myself on mute for that whole thing?
Yeah, you do.
That's awesome. So, with that being said, and all the discussion done, it appears to be done. If anyone else has any points, just jump in. But I believe what's before us now is to make a decision, and should we reopen this for public hearing? Unless I'm mistaken, and someone wants to correct with, correct me with that, and that would be, I guess, directed at Mr. Eichmann. But the, the consideration now is, are we going to reopen this for a public hearing process in light of Mr. Swanton's work? Excellent work, by the way. I do echo everyone. It's, you know, great job in, in putting in the, the time to do a detailed analysis of something that was concerning to you.
This is Andy. I would just note, having spoken with Jonathan earlier today, obviously, the, there'd be a need to re-advertise the subject hearing as if it were new. Obviously, the Jonathan mentioned earlier, continuity to the hearing at this point, because it's been closed. So for the notice of that, the continuity of the notice, we would reissue notice for the hearing, traditional 14 days prior and so forth. You would obviously want to work, pick a date that makes sense on the calendar, and advise all the parties, obviously, the applicant, original applicant. If that's the case, where the board goes. I just wondering, for the board's benefit, if Jonathan had any other suggestions or advice with respect to proceeding, if the board does elect to reopen the hearing?
This is John Eichmann again. No, not, not particularly. I think the board understands what the criteria are if they reopen the hearing, and it will be a full public discussion, obviously, with the applicant contributing on what the FAR means and how it should be calculated. And to the chairman's comments, yeah, I think what's before the board right now is, strictly speaking, a motion to reopen the hearing.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Attorney Eichmann. So with that said, I, I, time has come, I guess, to entertain a motion if someone has one.
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll, I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing regarding the application for a special permit for non-conformities for 468th Street, Matter Number 2020-30.
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
All right, we have a motion made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Ms. Webb, to reopen the public hearing process for Application 2020-030. With that, we go to the vote. Mr. Chempety has recused himself. Mr. Delisle.
I'm sorry, do we need to specify which date the meeting?
Do we have to, you know, we have to, that's a good question. Do we need to pick a date now?
No, we need to check and verify.
Got it.
Yeah, we'll take care of that. We do need to do the, do the required advertising statutes, you know, the 14 days prior to the hearing and all that.
Very good.
That's correct.
Thank you. So with that, I will go, I will go back to the vote, as we have a, a motion to reopen this public hearing on this application, 2020-030, again, made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Ms. Webb, and we'll go to the vote now. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagnon.
No.
And Mr. Banovic.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore is a yes. With that, I think we have too many yeses.
I think the five votes don't include Mr. Banovic.
That's right. So, we have four in the affirmative, so we, the vote is, motion's approved to reopen the public hearing process, and we'll proceed accordingly. public hearing process, and we'll proceed accordingly.
Hey, the office will circle back with the board, obviously, with the date, and with the applicant for this particular project, and obviously, the butters' notices and so forth. And Jonathan, thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, with that, that concludes the board's itinerary for the night. So with that, the only thing we need is maybe a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Delisle makes motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening.
I'll second it. Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Swanton, and we're going to do a voice call. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.